Good evening. I'd like to call the order, April 24th, Palatine County Board of Supervisors Meeting. If Ms. Carmack would do the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Cox, if you do the invocation, we'd be thankful.
Heavenly Father, thank you for another wonderful day at Palatine. Grant us wisdom and a bit of patience. Amen.
Thank you. Any requests to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation?
I just have a quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Are we still having closed session tonight?
I'm glad you brought that up. I am going to move that we move the closed session to 12B. That is open for a second.
All second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Are there any other requests postponed agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
So the closed session is 12B. Not we've done away with the closed session?
Correct. Yeah, it, we're, it's gonna be open in the public.
Okay, I just, I didn't realize whether we just moved it to, okay, got you, thank you.
Just the terminology of closed session, got it. Any other amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, just to reiterate, I pulled item M off the consent agenda.
Yes. We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So we'll take item N, M, off of the consent agenda, and that will become 12A. You guys got that? Can I get a motion to approve?
We have a 12A now.
The 12A is item M from the consent agenda. 12B is what was the closed session.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we move the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next thing I want to do is let everybody know that we have three public hearings this evening. When we get to public comment period, if you're gonna be speaking on the public hearings, then we would like for you to bring your conversation to us down at that time during the public hearing, as opposed to public comment, and then back to say the same thing during the public hearing. Also, in order to expedite the situation this evening of conversations from the public to the board, I'm gonna ask that if you're gonna speak to the board tonight, you come up here in one of the first three rows and sit, so that when you finish your conversation, the next person's ready to come up and speak at the podium. County Administrator, updates?
No updates this evening.
All right.
Sorry. So next, we have several proclamations. The first is recognizing May 2023 as Building Safety Month, whereas Palatine County is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and a central role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence and the resilience to these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us and the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. Whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas the Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, it starts with you, the theme for Building Safety Month 2023 encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Palatine do hereby proclaim the month 2023 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities. And we have our building official, Mr. David Donovan, here this evening to accept this proclamation.
Yep. Thank y'all for your support. Wanna just, you know, thank everybody and keep an eye out. We'll be having a Building Safety Month, our annual cookout later on in May, so keep an eye out for Facebook ad and flyers for that. Everybody's welcome to public and contractors.
Awesome. Great. Thank you very much for what you did.
You're welcome. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Keep up the good work.
Yeah, David and his team do a great job of implementing the building code in a customer-friendly way and making sure our buildings are safe and efficient. All right. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing May 2023 also as Older Americans Month. So it states, whereas Palatine includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcomed, included, and supported. And whereas Palatine recognizes our need to create a community that provides the services and supports older Americans' need to thrive and live independently for as long as possible. And whereas Palatine can work to build an even better community for our older residents by planning programs that encourage independence, ensuring activities are responsive to individual needs and preferences, increasing access to services that support aging in place. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Palatine do hereby proclaim May 2023 to be Older Americans Month. The Board of Supervisors urge every resident to recognize the contributions of our older citizens. Help us to create an inclusive society and join efforts to support older Americans' choices about how they age in their communities. Do not have anybody accepting that one tonight. That is just on behalf of the community.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment?
Mr. Chairman, I just want you to know that I'm happy to be alive in the month of May so that I can enjoy your proclamation. Thank you very much.
Our last proclamation.
Oh, and Mr. Chairman, let's just change the name of the resolution to the Not Yet Memorial Bill Cox Resolution.
I like the sound of that.
Last proclamation for the evening. Proclamation honoring Laura McFarland for service to the community as the editor of Palatine today. Whereas Laura McFarland has devoted nine years to serving the Palatine community as the editor of Palatine today. And whereas Laura McFarland has been a steadfast advocate for journalism, reporting news is unbiased and trustworthy. Whereas Laura McFarland has been a dedicated member of the community, engaging in various activities that have helped improve the lives of Palatine residents. And whereas Laura McFarland has demonstrated a passion for truth, honesty, and integrity, earning the respect and admiration of her colleagues and the community she serves. Now therefore, we the undersigned do hereby proclaim our appreciation for Laura McFarland's outstanding service to the Palatine community. We recognize her contributions to journalism and the role she has played in shaping the community's narrative. We commend Laura McFarland's dedication, commitment, and passion for journalism and community service, and we express our gratitude for her unwavering commitment to the community. Laura McFarland has had a high standard of excellence and has earned the respect and admiration of all who know her. In recognition of her selfless service in Palatine, we urge all residents to join in honoring Ms. McFarland for her contributions to our community.
Come on, Laura. There's gotta be some words there.
I've been avoiding this podium for nine years. No, just, it's been great covering the county for the last almost nine years and absolutely love it, looking forward to new opportunities. But Palatine's still home, so I'll still be paying attention, coming out to events and watching. Hope y'all have a great night.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Farland, I wish you well in your new ventures, but you leave a massive hole of information in this county, and we will miss you. You have worked hard. You have been pushed to the edge in terms of all the responsibility you've been given, and you've kept a wonderful smile on your face. So thank you very much for all that you've done for this community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Thank you very much.
Next under presentations, Commissioner Revenue, Mr. Jamie Timberlake, will lead an update on the 2023 real estate assessment.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our first quarterly report since we've come in-house, and I will actually be turning it over to Doug. I wanted to introduce you to Mr. Doug Flynn. He joined us the first week of April. He completed his BS degree at VCU in Urban Studies with concentration in planning. He brings a little over eighteen years of experience to the table, and that's all basically been in local government work. He started out in Chesterfield, worked his way up through appraiser technician and residential appraiser there, always seeking new opportunities as he did here, served as a core team of their transition when they went to in-house assessment software, and dealt with a new vendor, or actually left in-house and went to the new vendor. Then he worked in the City of Hopewell for a few years as a commercial and residential appraiser there. He's a member of both Virginia Assessing Officer and International Assessing Officer, and is currently has about four hundred-plus hours of continuing education through them, and is currently seeking his AAS, which is the Administrative Specialist Designation. He is told me very early on when I started talking to him about how he wanted to get to a smaller locality where there's much more intimate relationship with the citizens and the government, and we welcome him here with, to Palatine, and he's very passionate about customer service, as you know that I am. He also brings the experience of his family life. He has his wife Catherine and their two children, Chris and William, and he's a member of his local church. He does a lot of things, camping, a lot of outdoor stuff, working on cars, and we welcome him. He will be giving the first presentation.
Thank you, Jamie. Welcome, Mr. Flynn.
Welcome. Thank you, respected members of the board. My name is Douglas Flynn, and it's a pleasure to stand before you today and have the opportunity to present the first quarter 2023 real estate assessments update. In the first quarter of this year, there have been eighty-eight residential sales, nearly the same as the first quarter of 2022. There is a marked decrease in the new listings and pending sales. Homes are staying on the market longer. However, the median and average sales price is higher. The median sales price is still trending upwards from August of last year. There's no evidence, there is evidence of fewer listings, fewer actual sales, and property staying on the market longer, but there's no evidence of decreasing sales prices. In this graph, Palatine is shown in the lighter blue and is on top. The median sales price increases of homes in Palatine are tracking consistently above and with the same relative trajectory as the wider central Virginia market. With an occupancy rate of ninety-nine percent and rental rates continuing to trend higher is a reflection of the very good job that the economic development is doing and is a testament to the desirability of owning and doing business here in Palatine. Active commercial listings include several commercial land sites, one office building, and two small commercial properties. The Fed has consistently been ratcheting up the cost of borrowing, and the first quarter has risen fifty basis points with another quarter point likely probable in May. Despite that, fifteen and thirty-year mortgage rates have remained relatively consistent this quarter. Inflation is still high, but showing signs of slowing. Labor market remains tight, and the housing market typically peaks in the spring and summer. Having the in-house assessments, we have vested interest in the highest quality, most accurate property records over a third party that come in and leave. That in-house department develops and maintains a more intimate knowledge of this local market. And we currently have six BOEs, the Board of Evilization Appeals, three are commercial and three are residential. And I will do my best to answer any questions you may have, and if I don't have the answer, I'll research it and reach out with what I discover.
Any board members, questions, comments for Mr. Flynn?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Since this is a historical question, you might have to lean on Mr. Timberlake. The six BOE appeals, is that consistent, unusual, up, down?
Lower than last year, much, much lower than cycles under third parties.
Okay.
So when you look at two and four years ago, I think we had twenty-two in 2020. I think we had thirty-something, I'd have to look exactly, in 2018, but yeah.
So it's going down significantly. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I've got a question.
Go ahead.
So with no evidence of decreasing sales prices in the spring market right around the corner, which is the good market or increasing market, what is that really telling us?
Well, in assessments, we're always the cart that follows the horse. We'll pay attention to what's going on. I think what it's gonna continue to show is that the property's probably gonna stay on the market longer. There're gonna be fewer actual listings and fewer sales. But I think that according to the evidence, that the property values tend to at least will slowly increase, so there's no evidence of any decrease.
Okay. And do you see, in your experience, the average sale price certainly appears it's gone up with the, I guess, a multitude of reasons in Palatine, but do you see that continuing?
I do. I don't see any reason that it would be decreasing. Palatine is increasingly popular. So I don't see any, I see it maintaining its course.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both very much.
Thank you all.
We'll be doing this every quarter, so we'll be coming to you right in the middle of that or into that hot season and giving you the next report.
Well, you know, the information and distributing is always good.
Yes, sir.
Accurate information makes a big difference.
It does.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone in our first three rows. I don't guess we have anybody for a public comment period. Is there anyone on, Mr. Schwenderman? Come right on up there, sir.
I have a question. My name is Carl Schwenderman. I'm from seventeen twenty-seven Teresa Lane. Could Palatine County look into preserving the remains of the Tidewater and Western Narrow Gauge Railroad? It was an old, it was a railroad that existed in the eighteen hundreds, between eighteen eighty-three and nineteen seventeen, it used to be a three-foot gauge railroad. And there's railroad embankments and culverts left over from it. At the, like around the Palatine Middle School, there's a small clay culvert and an embankment that runs over to South Side Electric. And on this side of the village, there's an embankment that's over a half a mile long, and it's fifteen feet tall. Would Palatine kind of consider trying to preserve that? And along Route sixty between Rock, between Buckingham Road and Red Lane, there's an embankment from the railroad bed that's actually within twenty feet of Route sixty, and it actually stands over sixteen feet tall. It's a really long, narrow V-shaped embankment that follows the highway. I'm just asking, probably kind of could look into trying to preserve that for future people to see it and add signs to, so people know what they're looking at.
Thank you, sir. Brett, can you make a note of that to investigate that a little bit?
Yep, and I believe Mr. Schwendman has shared with me, he's done some additional research on that, so I'll reach out to him, and Carl, if you could share that with me, we'd be glad to
Great.
look into what the options are.
Great. Thank you. Anyone on Zoom?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll close the public comment period. Next up on the agenda is the consent agenda. You have a motion?
I move we approve the consent agenda as amended.
One second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then one of the items under the consent agenda that you approved was amendment to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee bylaws, and with that adds a seat on that group for Board of Supervisors representative. So eleven A would be appointing that person, which would run through the end of this year.
Through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three?
Correct.
Okay. So I'd like to appoint Mr. McClung to that position for the Palatine Parks Recreation Advisory Committee. One second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. McClung.
Thank you.
On that committee. Catch up with Mr. Flanagan and find out when the next meeting.
Then under new business item A, the first, we have property two eight eight one Anderson Highway. It is in violation of the county's ordinance for maintaining of a dump heap, some inoperable vehicles, equipment, miscellaneous debris like that. Court went to, county went to court on this matter in twenty twenty-two. The property owner was given time to clean up the property, and if they did not, then the county would author authorized by the court to contract to have the property cleaned up. So property owner, since that time, which has been about a year, a little over a year, has done some cleanup, but a large amount still remains there. So if the board wishes to move forward with contracting cleanup of that property, we reached out to firms. We only got one company back interested in doing it at a quote of eighty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. This would be paid by the county, then we would bill the property owner, and if they do not pay, then it could be placed as a lien on the property.
Okay. Ms. Carmack, you took, your request was to take this off of the consent agenda?
Correct. So I would like to just propose a couple of things to the board. The cost to clean this is eighty-six thousand dollars. Mr. Lachney, how old is the homeowner?
He's in his eighties. If you recall, I think he's eighty-seven, if I remember correctly. He came to a board meeting and spoke on one work session, but I believe he said he was eighty-seven.
Has he made a somewhat concerted effort to clean his property?
A little bit. I don't know if it's concerted, but it looks better than it did.
Right, right. Did he also provide you with a you, you mentioned to me, you actually saw where he had a ruling from the prior county attorney saying he was grandfathered in, more or less.
He asserted in court that the county attorney, Tubak, had given him a legal opinion that he was grandfathered as a junkyard. But he could not produce that letter in court, so, and I believe I've seen that letter, but I didn't have copy either.
Okay. I guess my point is, he's eighty-seven years old. He's making somewhat of an effort. Are we better off to continue to work with him and try to get him to clean, clean up instead of completely traumatizing the guy and, you know, saving the county close to ninety thousand dollars? So I just wanted to propose that. I personally, I have never received a complaint on this. It's a dump. There's no doubt. It's a dump. But this time of year, you can't see it, and even in the winter, it seemed like it was a little bit better, kind of shielded. So I wanted to, I mean, this isn't a hill I'm gonna die on, but I wanted to get your all's opinion, what you thought one way or the other.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. McClung.
Yes, yes.
I mean, it's in my district, and I've received no complaints on this property at all, so. And I have witnessed Mr., I'm not gonna say his name, but he has made an effort to clean up the site. He's been there a long time, been on this board, so I will not pursue it, so, at this time. Less legal advice is made, but I think he is making an effort to clean up the property.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Ms. Lachney, how long have you been with the county?
Nine years, ten in June.
One of your observations when you first came to the county was, we have a dump on Route sixty. You were somewhat incredulous to see that. People go up and down Route sixty today. And if you've been here any length of time, you know there's a dump there, but they've given up. Now, if you ask the people on the Anti-Liter Council, do they want it gone? Absolutely. Do you ask people in the county, do they want a clean county? Absolutely. Why do we have zoning ordinances? So that we can enforce things that are decriminating the county. And most importantly, Route sixty has always been referred to as the gold vein in this county. This is where we wanted economic development. So if we permit a dump to continue to exist, if we don't follow our own zoning ordinances, how can we hope to enforce other zoning violations? Now, when you go back to making good faith efforts and things like that, I'm not sure what a good faith effort looks like at this point. If the property can be cleaned up, and we put a lien on the property such that the taxpayer is protected, and we meet goals in this county of having a clean county, having economic development, and fairly enforcing our zoning ordinances across all parts of the county, why wouldn't we do that? What kind of example are we gonna set? If we pick and choose who we're gonna enforce the zoning ordinances with and who we're not, it creates a challenge. I know Mrs. Carmack, when she had her situation over there next to her house, and I supported her, and I thought she was doing the right thing, and I still think she did the right thing. But we had an eyesore right there on five twenty-two. And people didn't like it. We cleaned it up, albeit it was for a lesser amount of money, but we did it. So I think in fairness to everybody in the county and to ourselves, we need to move forward. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
The dump ordinance, Mr. Lachney, I believe, was revised in the past two or three years?
Yeah, we actually didn't have anything that prohibited until probably three or four years ago. We created the dump heap definition, yes.
And that was driven, Mrs. Carmack, by you, okay, because of a situation that needed attention, and we couldn't deal with it.
Correct.
And so now we have an ordinance that allows us to deal with it. And we're saying, wow, should we back away from it? How many court cases have we had on this, Mr. Lachney?
Well, it was one case, but we went back, I'm just going by memory, five or six times.
Okay, so we're getting progress only because, five or six times, because we're continuing to push that. This is not happening.
Well, the five or six times was, court judges don't like to stick it to people on these kinds of issues. The judge kept continuing it. It was at the judge, he kept bumping it out to let, let the property owner keep working on the property.
But in fact, that's the pressure consistently over time, and so when these cases, as you've explained to me, it really runs until the judge gets tired of hearing it, and
Yeah, at some point, he doesn't want to see it again. That's, that's what happens.
So property has to be cleaned up in order to be sold. I wouldn't buy it with all that stuff on it. And so are we hastening that project? I don't know the answer to that. But I'm concerned about, we create an ordinance specifically to allow us to deal with situations like this. And there are others in the county.
And there are others in the county. And when it comes time, we say, well, let's back away from it. A kind of a selective, Mr. Williams said, a selective approach. That concerns me. It's not the number of complaints, it only takes one complaint. If the property is not in compliance with the ordinance. So this is the tough, hard piece of having a zoning ordinance like you wanted, Mrs. Carmack. I mean, it really is, it says, okay, at some point, then you pull the trigger. So we've been talking about this forever, we have changed the rules so that the ordinance reflects this, we've gone through the legal system. I think we should continue forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
Mr. Shardine, is there any other options besides? I concur, you, you guys have very, very valid points, you know, Mr. Cox, Mr. Williams, a hundred percent. My point is, it's probably a sentimental point, the guy's eighty seven years old, had this property in the same condition long before we were ever here, he had a letter stating that he could do it. To me, it's a little different than the case that was at the corner of Old River Trail and 522, but nonetheless, are there any other avenues that we could take to continue working with him? Could zoning go in there periodically and see if he is cleaning up and give him, you know, just some more time? That, that's simply what I'm asking.
So I think staff could, could certainly continue to inspect it and send him letters or contact him. I also wonder maybe as an option, Mr. Lachney, is it, is it possible? Could we draft some kind of an agreement or something that agrees to with actual set milestones? Because so far, it's been weird, the court supplied pressure and he cleans it up, but I can't, couldn't tell you what vehicles left, what, you know, what cleaned up actually meant. I wonder if we could have a, something that's tangible where he has to report to us on a monthly or every other month basis of, I move these specific vehicles? And I'm not sure. If, if we were to go with this action, we certainly would not just show up tomorrow with the crew to do it. We would give him advance notice and want him to clean it up. But if we were to work with them more, I would want it to be something tangible. So it's not just up to our staff to decide whether it's enough or not enough. I think it needs to be measurable and mutually agreed upon.
Answer the question, yeah, we could do an agreement with him. And the problem with an agreement is then if he breaches it, we gotta go back to court to enforce the agreement. That's the tricky part, is it actually reinitiates court action? So that would be the kind of the downside unless the agreement was bonded. But I don't know, this gentleman can afford a bond. If we attached a bond to the agreement, then, then that would be a very viable solution. If he could post some sort of a bond that, if it doesn't, if he doesn't clean it up, as agreed that we can trigger the bond and use that to clean it up, that, that would be a way to do it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Mrs. Carmack. What if, I don't, you know, what's the trigger that says he's done enough? Okay, those kinds of questions, same kind of questions that Mr. Lachney raised. Why don't we defer this for a month? Take a look at the kinds of things that you've suggested, that you suggested, Mr. Shardine, and see if we can find something that makes you feel more comfortable about the situation. If we can't, we defer it for a month. Take a look at, see if we can find any other options that really make sense. I mean, just say it's gonna get better, okay? And trying to say, well, we gotta remove two cars this week. I, I don't see how any of that works, but I would be more than happy to defer it for a month to see if we could find something that would help ease your concerns, which are legitimate, I have no problems with those, okay? That's, that would be my suggestion at this point.
Could certainly support that.
Now, I don't, I mean, from my perspective, I don't have any problem going, deferring for thirty days. I think the two things to me that raise the most issue is eighty six thousand dollars. That's a lot of money, and we got one bid. At least it's a lot more than fifty thousand for a park, and I heard about that for five months. I, I, the other part that gets me is the, the man is eighty seven years old, and I do know, I'm, whether anybody can buy it or not, I mean, I drove down the road that runs parallel with sixty and have seen cars from that property on flatbed trucks coming out of there. My son lives on that road, and that's why I travel down it quite frequently. And so I know there's been an effort. How much of an effort, I think that's the same thing we could all agree on, I, I don't, I can't tell you that. You know, was there thirty five cars there and now there's ten? I can't tell you that. But I, I do appreciate the suggestion of Mr. Cox that, you know, we defer this for thirty days. Maybe there's a conversation with, with the citizen. And the other thing that kind of enters into my thought process, people driving down Route sixty right there, they're, they're heading down that hill, they're going sixty five. I hope they're watching the road, not over in the woods. Because it's, it's been cleaned up a little bit there. And I, I mean, my own, the way I look at it and what I seen is it's like, he took some of the cars out and then some of them he moved to the backside. If you go to the backside, you look over there and you definitely see, see cars there, but not like you do going down Route sixty by any means. And the other thing that comes into play with this heap or dump, as, as it, as we refer to it with the ordinance, how does, does his house come into play there? I mean, we all know this situation pretty well, I think, does his house come into play with any of that? Or is it just the?
I, I think the house would be a bridge too far, interpreting the court's order. I think the court's order is clean up the debris, I don't think it includes the house.
Does that go anything outside of the house?
Yeah, any debris outside the house would be subject to the court order.
Does this bid tell us exactly that? Any, because this house, there's, there's an indoor or in-ground pool there and also from years ago. But I mean, there's a lot of debris on the outside of the house, I get that.
Yeah, what, what the quote specifically said was to remove vehicles and junk. And they included some pictures of what they observed. So I think overall, they have a good idea of what it is, but I'm sure there's some, some items individually that if you said, is this included or not?
Right, I don't wanna get in at eighty six thousand, a month from now, we decide, okay, we wanna do this, and then all of a sudden, this company goes and says, okay, well, you want us to get that too? It's gonna be a hundred and twenty thousand. We just need to make sure we're on clear terms with them also. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Question for the county attorney. The gentleman's age has been mentioned. What happens if he passes away?
Well, if he passes away, whoever inherits this property, as somebody already said, I don't see that they can sell it without cleaning it up. So unless he's got one heir only.
But my point being, excuse me for interrupting Tom, but my point being is, are we gonna enforce whoever inherits it to clean it up? I mean, are we kicking the can?
Well, if it's multiple heirs, they're gonna want it cleaned up so they can sell it and split their money.
We, we're assuming that. I don't, I don't know anything about heirs, I don't know anything about, you know, who's gonna inherit it, I know nothing.
Yeah, I don't either, if it's multiple heirs, I think it's self-correcting, if it's a single heir, then we're still.
But again, if it's multiple heirs, I don't know what their wherewithal is and their ability to clean up the property. I, I don't, I don't know any of those things. But I, if you want to defer it for a month, I'm fine with Mr. Cox's suggestion to bring back strategies, alternatives, whatever, as long as they're measurable and they're enforceable. If we, if we can't measure progress and if we don't have any way of moving the stick further down the road, leading to the desired goal of cleaning up the property, then we haven't accomplished anything. But let's see what we're, you know, staff is able to come up with. We, we might be able to solve the problem, I don't know.
Would you like me to make a motion to defer this for thirty days till our next meeting?
Yes, that's fine. Your motion.
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's my motion.
I'm sorry.
I move to defer it for thirty days to our next Board of Supervisor meeting.
Correct, regular, regular. Right. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, we got one no. Next up, the closed session. Ms. Carmack, I think you wanna start that?
Correct, I would like to start by making a motion for the county to pay eighty one hundreds of legal fees in defense of my recent allegations regarding my residency.
That a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
I'll second that.
Comments?
Chairman. Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Mrs. Carmack, could you explain what you're talking about other than, you're kind of a one-liner? Could you provide some more information, please?
Sure, I would be happy to. I was, received an email from Mr. Dunkum of the Caroline County Commonwealth Attorney on Friday, January twenty seventh, deeming that my seat was, they did an investigation and they deemed that my seat was vacated. They then basically put the decision about that vacancy to, back to Mr. Lachney to determine whether he wanted to proceed with a civil proceeding against me. From that point forward, I had to basically proceed. Mr. Lachney then sent us an email, the Board of Supervisors, and I'm not gonna read the whole email because it's quite, quite long. But he said, as you can see, the opinion defers to me on any next steps to be taken. So, and his suggested course of action was allow Supervisor Carmack to show the Board of Supervisors her evidence in closed session. If the Board of Supervisors are satisfied that Supervisor Carmack had no intention to permanently move into a new district, the matter should be at an end. If the Board of Supervisors determines that further investigation is warranted, outside counsel should be engaged to do so and render an opinion. I would have a conflict of interest to conduct such an investigative investigation. Please let me know if you have any questions. So from that point, I candidly was hoping that we could go into a closed session, I could show my evidence to the board. But basically, Mr. Williams replied, when I received Tom's email to us dated one thirty twenty three, I called him and discussed my belief that this matter was not properly placed with the Board of Supervisors and shared by concern that his involvement appeared to be a conflict of interest since he represents the board. I also shared that as an elected supervisor, I did not feel it was my job to sit in judgment of a peer involving a possible violation of Code of Virginia stemming from a written opinion of a court-appointed special prosecutor, which is a criminal matter. I feel this is a matter for our judicial system to decide, not the board or social media. Mr. Cox said something similar. In my opinion, Mr. Lachney should not have accepted responsibility for the resolution of the problem. Ms. Carmack vacating her seat from the Assistant Commonwealth Attorney of Caroline County. There are two considerations that lead me to this conclusion. He has a conflict of interest. The individual members of the Board of Supervisors are his client. He does not have the authority, and neither does the Board of Supervisors, to bring closure to the finding that Ms. Carmack has vacated her seat. Interviewing Ms. Carmack and then laying out potential, potential courses of action for the Board of Supervisor, BOS provides no viable options that I can accept because of A and B, and the apparent dismissal of the investigation conducted by the state police, which again is criminal. Resolution of the findings of Assistant Commonwealth Attorney of Caroline County should be resolved in the legal system, not in the political system. I then, realizing I was not probably going to get my druthers, sent an email to Mr. Lachney a day later, and I said, good morning, Tom, two questions. Well, I need BOS approval for reimbursement of legal fees for a legal proceeding looking for a retraction from Caroline County and a FOIA violation. Or being this is a supervisor matter, is it automatically covered? Secondly, as I am looking to pursue this, would you be able to quote unquote, represent me? Or will I need to hire an outside attorney? He replied, the board would need to vote to cover your legal fees. You can slash should get your own attorney to advise you on the full spectrum of your legal options. So that is what I did. I, I got my attorney. And he sent, and as you all know the rest of the story, he sent an email and, and conducted a true investigation and I received a retraction from Caroline County and my FOIA requests. So that is why I am looking to be reimbursed for my legal fees. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cox.
Mrs. Carmack has accurately represented my document, which I hand-delivered to Mr. Lachney two days after his email. But there's another piece to this that was not disclosed, disclosed. And this had to do with the disclosure to the press about Mr. Lachney's email. And it was given to the press. And the subject of it is residency of Supervisor Carmack confidential. And I responded to Mr. Barley for your consideration. We are having this discussion because of the inappropriate relationship that your estranged wife described at our October meeting. The question about Mrs. Carmack's residency is a direct result of actions taken by you, Mr. Barley, and Mrs. Carmack. It is your story. I will resist any attempt to add more people to that story, and that certainly includes Mr. Lachney, Mr. McClung, Mr. Williams and myself. The story belongs solely to you and Mrs. Carmack, it is yours and yours alone to resolve. And that's where it ends. Mrs. Carmack, you hired an attorney for FOIA information. That's what his bill says. That's what the bill says. I'm sorry, RE, FOIA. Okay, now that's certainly your opportunity. I have no problems with that. I see no reason why taxpayer money from the citizens of Palitan should be involved in a civil case. And this is a civil case, and it's never been a criminal case. It was explored as a criminal case, but it's always been civil. And it has always resided in the civil section of the Circuit Court of Palitan. So I see, I understand your request, I understand why you would wanna request it, but I don't see that that is an obligation for the citizens of Palitan County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. McClung.
The, the way, because of the actions of two, she was forced to do this. She was forced to do this. Mr. Lachney is paid to represent us, he could not represent her. She had to get representation to clear herself, she has cleared herself a hundred percent. She should be paid for what she had to endure. Not just legal fees either.
Mr. Chairman.
Are you finished, Mr. McClung? For now. Okay, for now. Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
This is a question for the county attorney. I asked you just recently for an opinion. First question was, I wanted to know, you know, on the voting for this transfer of money from county taxpayers for Mrs. Carmack's attorney's fees. It, was that appropriate? Could she vote? And you opined that, yes, she could. And you used the example, it was no different from voting, you know, for a raise for the Board of Supervisors. I think that was one of the examples.
I think that was one of the examples. The second question I asked you was with regard to this whole matter of civil versus criminal. So I ask you, you know, what was your opinion on that? What does the Code of Virginia say? And so I'm going to ask you to respond in public to what your answer was.
Yeah, Virginia Code, Section fifteen point two, fifteen twenty-one, says that an officer-employed locality is investigated, arrested, indicted, or otherwise prosecuted on any criminal charge. I'll skip the middle part. Found not guilty, the governing body of the locality may reimburse the officer-employed for reasonable legal fees and expenses incurred by him in defense of the investigation or charge. And the reimbursement comes from the locality. So this particular code section allows a Board of Supervisors, if one of the supervisors is criminally investigated, to reimburse for the legal fees that are incurred in defending that investigation. This case is unfortunately was a mess from the beginning. And this isn't meant, with all due respect to Mr. Cox, it was originally initiated as a criminal matter. Because if you look at the motion to appoint special prosecutor, motion is hereby made pursuant to Section nineteen point, nineteen point two, one fifty-five of Code of Virginia for a special prosecutor and investigate, and if necessary prosecute the above styled matter. So it was originally initiated as a criminal matter. The claim being, kind of a strange claim, that there was a violation of twenty-four point two five oh one. Now, what twenty-four point two five oh one says is when somebody's running for office and they submit their signatures, they have to certify that they live in the district that they are going to try and represent. And it's perjury and a crime. If you lie that you live in a district that you don't live in when you're running for office. That was the alleged criminal misconduct. So basically, that four years ago, when Mrs. Carmack decided to run, that she violated this section by fraudulently representing that she lived in the district when she did not. The local prosecutor then asked the Powhatan Circuit Court to appoint a special prosecutor. That's what nineteen point two one fifty-five is. Because he felt like he had a conflict in investigating and potentially prosecuting this. It was then sent to Caroline County, who did an investigation, and I think immediately determined it was not twenty-four point two five oh one. There was really no allegation that four years ago, she didn't live in the district and that there was a fraudulent representation that she did. So, as the Board knows, back on January twenty-seventh, the Assistant Commonwealth Attorney in Caroline wrote our prosecutor, Mr. Cirillo, and copied me a letter that said, "No criminal, this is civil. She moved out of her district, and she's, her seat is vacant, and the county attorney's going to have to figure out what to do with this." So it sort of morphed from what had originally been a criminal complaint to a civil complaint. And Mrs. Carmack's legal fees were incurred after that date. So the question becomes, are the subsequent civil matter, is that part of the criminal? And only the Board can decide that. I found one case on the subject. And basically, what the Circuit Court judge said is, totally the Board's discretion. It's not challengeable in court. And so the issue to me, I think the technical reading of fifteen point two, fifteen twenty-one is the investigation, the defense had to be of the criminal. It stopped being criminal before Mrs. Carmack hired her attorney. However, this Board could determine if it so chose, and this is what I did say in the email, it could determine that the impetus of those legal fees was the criminal allegation and that the civil legal fees are derivative of the criminal. That's a matter that only the Board can determine.
Let me follow up. In your email to us, to my question, you put in bold, and you put in parentheses emphasis at it, "In defense of an investigation of a charge that was criminal." Now, I understand what you just said, but you went on to add that the retaining of counsel occurred three weeks after we received, and all of us received notification on or about the same time. So three weeks later, after we were notified that this was a civil charge, it wasn't criminal. The correction had been made. That's when the legal counsel was retained for, I believe, what was it? Seven, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour and six hundred and fifty?
I did, I didn't check that. I'm not sure if we need to know, but I didn't.
That was the bill that we were set for the reasonable charges. But when we had an earlier discussion of this, I believe Mrs. Carmack came following and said, "There was no criminal investigation that came from the state police." But I'm going to go with what you said. Now, in the case example you used, it said that it was up to the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, what, it was?
It was up to the discretion.
Yeah, it's Judge Gamble out of Nelson County, who actually sat here in Powhatan for our, our seed litigation a few years ago. Judge Gamble said, "It is totally in the discretion of the Board of Supervisors." And he refused to opine on the issue.
So when we say totally in the discretion of the Board of Supervisors, are you saying that that usurps the applicable statute about reimbursement for criminal charges only?
No, no, it doesn't usurp, he wasn't saying, and it doesn't usurp the state code. State code is state code. It says what it says.
So the discretion doesn't overrule what he says that we are supposed to go by, and that is for criminal charges?
Correct. I said, the email you're referencing, I said, "It seems to me that when the legal fees were incurred, it was on the civil side." But I also said, "The Board can take the position that since the matter began as a criminal investigation, the entire subject matter is at issue here." So I basically, it's the Board's decision, not mine. Yeah, I just kind of told you what the law was. The Board will have to decide whether the criminal extended to when it became civil or whether, since all the legal fees were after it became civil, that it does not apply. That's, that's something the Board will, there's no case law. There's no nothing out there that would definitively rule on that one way or the other.
But you opined, and you gave an opinion, you didn't feel like that in this case, it did meet the bar for reimbursement.
I said, the civil, by the time the legal fees were incurred, it says, "Defense of an investigation of a criminal charge." And when the legal fees were incurred, technically, it was not criminal anymore. It was civil. And therefore, under a strict reading of that ordinance, it would be, no, it's not applicable.
Those are my questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cox. Mr. Latchney, let me, so I'm clear, let me read what you sent us. "I do not believe the fees were incurred in defense of the investigation of criminal charges, but related to the unfounded civil allegation that Supervisor Carmack had moved out of her district." It really wasn't whether she'd moved out of her district or not.
Yep.
She, she, in her own testimony, said she'd moved out of her district. It was about whether she had vacated her district.
Well, no, moved out of, moved out of the district is a legal term of art. It means you moved with no intention of returning. So I use, I use the-
That means vacating.
Yeah, but, but when-
Which she did not do.
When the courts look at moved out of district, they're saying you moved out with no intention of coming back.
But I mean, you made it, I mean, as I read this, you made it pretty clear that the fees were when she was dealing with a civil allegation, not criminal.
Yeah, that, as I've said, I said, I actually, the criminal ended technically on January twenty-seventh, when the Caroline Commonwealth Attorney, but so technically, the criminal ended. And that's why I said in the last paragraph, "The Board will have to determine if it feels like the impetus for the subsequent civil arose out of the criminal." That's not something I could decide.
Thank you, Mr. Latchney.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
It's kind of interesting because we are talking about conflict of interest and objectivity. And the interesting thing is, you two gentlemen have been involved in this investigation from the very beginning and have spearheaded it. Going back to November second, when Mr. Cox called Mr. Latchney and asked him to investigate whether or not I was living in the district, to which I replied, "Yes, I am fully aware of the requirements of being on the Board of Supervisors, and I can provide you any information that you need." The complainant told the state police officer, under the criminal investigation, "Two board members you may want to speak with if an investigation is approved are Bill Cox and David Williams." To follow up again, Sergeant Warner, I hope this hope note finds you well. "I've had a second Powhatan Board of Supervisor member reach out to me to find out if the investigation is moving forward. He pointed out that with each meeting, split decision votes add to the legislation that has to be rectified or undone. Any new developments with the case you could share would be appreciated. Mr. Cox, you reached out to my husband to find out about my living arrangements. Mr. Cox, you also reached out to Judge Paul Sella to find out about this investigation, as he said in an email. I will mention that another Board of Supervisors, William Cox, called me a while back and said, 'You may not be able to talk to me about what I want to talk about.' And I said, 'Depends on what it is.' He said, 'Ms. Carmack?' And I said, 'No,' end of story." So I think when we look at conflict of interest, I think you do have a conflict of interest. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Carmack. Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
At our joint meeting with the school board, was the meeting where Mrs. Carmack announced that she was not going to run again. As part of that, which has now been characterized as, "I'm a victim" speech, she read a portion of the email that she just referenced. This is from Mr. Kunkka to Mr. Warner, Powhatan BOS Meeting, Public Comment, October twenty-fourth. This is Mr. Kunkka confirming what he's told Mr. Warner. "Thank you for the email." And the email was okay, thank you, thank you. He thanked him for talking with him and said this, and gave him the exact place to go to listen to Mrs. Barley, who came down on October twenty-fourth and said that Mr. Barley and Mrs. Carmack were in an appropriate relationship. And that was what the focus of this was for. He said, "I wanted to give you that." He said, "Then," he said, "You may, two board members you may wish to speak with. One is Bill Cox, District Four. Contact information. The other is David Williams, District One. Contact information." And said, "The remaining board members have contact information on the county website so that you can follow up with them." Mrs. Carmack neglected to mention, the subject of this email was the BOS meeting where Mrs. Barley decided to public comment to speak, and that there were other board members also referenced. So it wasn't just me, it wasn't just Mr. Williams, it was all of the board members. And so, yes, Mrs. Carmack, that doesn't change the fact that all of this, and the reason we're having this discussion is because of the events that Mrs. Barley laid out. And that's the reason all of this exists. Just that simple. I, you know, you know, somehow you've been wronged, and it's somebody else's fault. I'm sorry. These are your actions. This is your responsibility. It's not the Board's responsibility. It's not my responsibility. And certainly not the taxpayers of Powhatan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. McClung.
If all this could have been avoided, if someone would just went to Ms. Carmack and asked her what was going on, which is what I did, I didn't have to go behind somebody's back and do what y'all two did. And y'all were the one costing the taxpayers money, not Ms. Carmack. Because of y'all's actions is why she had to prove herself that it wasn't criminal, which is started, as Mr. Latchney said, as a criminal investigation. If y'all were in the same situation, you would have, you would also get an attorney. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. McClung. Yes, Mr. Williams.
I don't intend to get in the back and forth tonight, but I will respond to Mr. McClung. Mr. McClung said, "This would all been resolved if only we had gone to the closed session."
I didn't say closed session.
Sir. Excuse me, gone, well, that's what the county attorney had recommended, was a closed session with Mrs. Carmack.
I didn't say that.
I'm sorry, am I missing the conversation here? I'm speaking. But we were going to have a closed session, we were going to close session. Mrs. Carmack could make her case. And if we didn't like it, we could go out and we could do our own investigation. I stand by exactly what I said then. I didn't run for office to sit in judgment of another supervisor. Never once did I think that was a good idea. Because you're going to see, just like tonight, anything that comes out of that closed session, or that decision by the Board of Supervisors, is going to be painted as political. Regardless of which side you want to choose, it was going to be political, just like it's trying to be framed tonight. That's why I didn't want to do it and refused to do it. That's why tonight, I wasn't going into closed session. So I was glad they changed from the request from Mrs. Carmack to have a closed session, to have open session. Because the public needs to know what's going on. Now, this thing about going behind people's backs simply isn't true. Simply isn't true. The people that came to us came as a result of the meeting on October twenty-fourth. People were asking, and I can't tell you how many different people, they said, "What are we going to do?" And the response always was, "This rests with the community." I didn't even know that Jim Kunkka had met with the Commonwealth Attorney. I didn't even know that he had had a conversation with the state police. I only found out later. Just like the county attorney who called Mrs. Carmack, I believe back in December, because he was concerned, he was hearing, I guess, the same thing we were seeing on Facebook and the questions we were getting from the community. What was going on? What would happen with the situation that was brought to the October twenty-fourth meeting? Who was going to be resigning? Who was going to stay on? All these were questions floating around. And then, what about votes if indeed Mrs. Carmack hadn't been living in the district? What was the Gordian knot we would have to untangle here in accounting? People were concerned. They wanted to know. And they were asking us. And I'm going to tell you, yeah, I talked to a lot of people. Because a lot of people were aghast. They were concerned. So whatever came out, we only found out after it came into being. And yes, did I want to know what was going on? You're darn right. did I want to know what was going on? You're darn right. Because it affected all of us in this county. So those are my comments in response to Mr. McClung's. Nobody's gone behind anybody's back. Just like tonight. We shouldn't even be here talking about this. We shouldn't even be in front of the county. But unfortunately, we're having to deal with this. And now the taxpayers are being asked to pay for something that should never ever happened. We shouldn't even be here. But yet we are. And tonight, we're going to be deciding whether or not we want to use the taxpayers' money to pay for, as Mr. Cox said, this is basically about for you. If you go back and look at the billing, it's public information. Take a look at it. This is about getting names. Who's doing this? Who's behind this? That's not what this is about. This was about a civil charge that came down and then it was a decision. Nothing was going, nothing had happened. Nobody even sued. We weren't in court. This never even went to court, even in civil court. And now we have a statute where we have to decide whether or not we want to reimburse for this? That's the question. And again, we shouldn't even be here discussing this, but we are. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Now, we'll just wait on me so everybody can rebut what I say. I've been pretty quiet on the whole issue the whole time and rightfully so. It's not something that belongs up here on this board. It's not something that belongs to Powhatan County. It's my personal life. What I do is my personal life. And I'm going to be real honest with you. I listened to, I've had all these phone calls and I've had this and I've had that and people call me. And you know what? Maybe that's true. Maybe. There's laws. They're called criminal. They're called civil. And they're called election laws. I don't think Ms. Carmack has had a set of handcuffs put on her yet. I can tell you, I haven't ever in my life. And I will agree with what either it was Mr. Williams or Mr. Cox said. Yeah, the voters get to decide. You're going to get to decide a lot in November. All you got to do is listen to some of the public comments that come down here and listen to what the actions that this board take and you can decide on what you're going to do. Is it taxpayers' money? Yep, it's taxpayers' money. It's taxpayers' money that pays Mr. Latchney. It's taxpayers' money that pays me. It's taxpayers' money that pays every board member up here. It's taxpayer money that pays Mr. Shardine. When Mr. Latchney suggests to Ms. Carmack that she seek outside counsel, he gets paid to represent us. That's his job. Represent us for whatever the situation we're in. That's his job to do that. You can listen to everybody and anybody come up here and bloviate. I'm not doing that. This is about political. I don't care what you say, who you talk to. However, I'll go to my grave telling you it's political. Three-two votes. It's all about a three-two vote. Everything's three-two vote in this county. Well, if I vote with Ms. Carmack or she votes with me, how many votes is that, folks? That's two. Correct. That's our Commissioner of Revenue back there providing the answer of two. And when two people vote, what do they get? Nothing. They're on what's called the losing end, or they didn't get the consensus, or they didn't get the majority. And you know, when you do that for about two to three years, it gets a little bit disgruntled, I think. Makes you a little bit sick to the stomach. Makes you get a little bit upset. Makes you say some things you might not want to say, do some things you might not want to do. But it's called being on a three-two vote. You ever been on a football team, went oh and sixteen? You ever been on a baseball team and went oh and twenty-four? It's not fun. Trust me. But two people only get two votes. Not three. It takes a third person to get that third vote. It is a mess from the beginning. I agree. Completely. I think that the criminal investigation was just that, a criminal investigation. I think it was misread, misinterpreted by, I could say who and point the finger, but I think the whole thing was led down the wrong road with criminal investigation. And then it got to, oh, no, it's a civil. Well, if you don't start the criminal, you don't get to the civil. Criminal gets you to the civil conclusion that the Assistant Commonwealth Attorney had in Caroline County. Whether it was two weeks, two months, or three days after that, that Ms. Carmack decided this is affecting me, my reputation. It's not true. Whether it's civil or criminal, it doesn't get there unless the criminal investigation starts. There's many documents would say criminal investigation. And then, yes, the documents go to the Assistant Commonwealth Attorney in Caroline County saying, it's not. And then they retract the whole thing. The Commonwealth Attorney in Caroline County retracts it all, apologizes. I made a mistake. My office made a mistake for whatever reason. I don't think Ms. Carmack is playing a victim card. I think she's doing what some of you don't want to hear. It's called the truth. The conversation that my ex-wife now came down and presented, that's her choice to come down and present that. How she presented it, I know there's probably many of you in this room and many in this county that's been divorced. I think you understand the emotions that go along with a divorce. And if you don't, if you've never been divorced, I hope you never are divorced. It's not nice. It's not pretty. If I did something that led to all that that was illegal, here I am, come and handcuff me. I don't think that's the case. We have a motion. The motion is to pay the fees. The fees are eighty, reimburse the fees of eighty-one hundred dollars. We have a second. Do we need to do a roll call, Mr. Latchney?
If discussion is over, I would suggest a roll call.
Okay.
Well, I have a question for the County Attorney.
Sure, go ahead.
Tom, you told Mrs. Carmack to go forward getting a lawyer. Did you mean that the board would pay for it?
No, she read, I pointed out that only the board could decide to pay for it. Yes. That's not something I could authorize.
Because that's important. I mean, if the impression was given that, you know, this was something that the board was going to do, I can understand. But you're saying that wasn't the case?
No, Ms. Carmack read.
I read it.
She read it. I specifically.
I just wanted to make sure.
I can't even personally.
But I wanted to make sure that it wasn't something that was promised.
No representation on my end that the county would reimburse any of it.
Right. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
No surprise to the community. No minds were changed. Positions have changed. Continuation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
In Powhatan, if you want to continue to believe the man that sit here and lied four times at a meeting and got censured, and one of the very few people in the Commonwealth of Virginia that got censored for that, you go right ahead and continue to believe that. The same would apply on the day that he attacked the former county administrator and said, you know what? You took a million dollars and moved it around. And after about fifteen to twenty minutes later, that county administrator and staff said, you know what, Mr. Cox? You voted to move the money around. So that's up to the voters. I agree with that completely. It's all up to the voters. And I think I'm thankful it is up to the voters. I'm very thankful. Because you get to make a decision. I just hope you make an informed decision over researching and finding out what the true stories are that's really happened with the votes up here on this board. Now, can we have our roll call? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Williams.
I'm still trying to digest what was just said by the chairman. I'm not sure it had anything to do with what we were talking about tonight, but maybe it has everything to do with what's been going on, as he pointed out. I hope people will take note of his comments. No, is my, the roll call, no.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Nay.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye. Bring us to our public hearings tonight.
First is a rezoning case, case twenty-three dash oh one, Trent rezoning, requesting rezoning of parcel. Tax map twenty-six dash twenty-seven from agricultural A-ten to Commerce Center CC. They are proposing to use the parcel for a funeral home and crematory. And Ms. Sarah Rosmas, planner two, is here to present on this case.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So this, this is a rezoning case for Ms. Trent. She is proposing to use the property for a funeral home and crematory. She is a small business owner. She is looking to open this facility to have another option as for a funeral home in Powhatan. We currently have one. So this would be a really nice opportunity to kind of extend this business into the county. She also plans to use a lot of her, a lot of this property to stay as untouched natural land. Currently zoned A-ten is located in our gateway business commerce or commerce area. And she wants to do a Commerce Center rezoning. Happy to take any questions.
We're going to open up for the public hearing now. Let the public come down and speak on this.
Is the applicant was?
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would the applicant like to speak? Okay. We're open for public comment.
Hello, my name is Carl Schwendeman. Could they ask the applicant to build a five-foot wide sidewalk, like one of the village sidewalks in front of the development, set back fifteen feet from routes, ten to fifteen feet from Route sixty? Because the reason why I'm asking is that the sidewalk would become part of a bigger one in the future is the, because the area at the intersection of, at the intersection of five-twenty-two and Route sixty, that's become a new village center in the next ten or twenty years as it's rapidly developed. And there's other, there's another development for an industrial park at that intersection. And if they ask for a little section of sidewalk along the front of the property, it could help connect the communities, the Powhatan Community Center into the village sidewalk system. If the village sidewalk system gets extended out to the post office one day.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Is anyone on Zoom?
No, sir.
Okay. Not seeing anyone else, we'll close the public hearing. And we will have board members' comments. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox. I don't have any problems with the use. I don't have any problems with the location, but I have some questions that I'm concerned about. This is in our wastewater district. And normally, we would require the applicant to use a wastewater system. But because of the chemicals that are used in their process, embalming process, I presume, we don't want those in our groundwater, excuse me, in our wastewater system. It will be detrimental to. So now we're going to a septic field. What do we know about, what's the Health Department said about putting those chemicals into the ground? If we don't want them in a wastewater system, why do we want them in the ground?
So I did look into that. So I talked to the Health Department. They said that they have some permits that Ms. Trent will be required to fill out some certain specifications for the well, for the stuff that she'll be using. As in addition to, she needs to reach out to DEQ for approval.
So they have a process?
Yeah.
The deals, deals.
Yes.
This is Commerce Center. The sketch that I see shows parking in front. I thought in Commerce Center, it had to be either on the side or in the back.
That is going to be amended.
I'm sorry?
That, that will be amended. This is, that was a very preliminary concept sketch.
So what I'm looking at is not what's going to happen?
Um, just specifically for the parking. So we require for our application to have a concept plan. But, you know, obviously, nothing's really set in stone until they apply for a site plan. So the parking is going to be slightly adjusted. There's not going to be anything on the, I believe it's the east side. There's not going to be anything on that side.
Do we have a proffered conceptual plan?
We don't have a proffered conceptual plan quite yet, but I do have a proffered condition for the rear portion open natural landscaped.
Mr. Blackney, if we don't have a proffered conceptual plan, is there any way to enforce this?
No, in fact, if you look at this, this is a wide-open CC rezoning. Nothing's proffered. So technically, it's just, it's just a straight-up CC rezoning.
We, we do have site plan requirements for commercial.
I understand that, but no, but they can put anything they want on it.
Essentially, yes. I did ask the applicant if she would consider proffering certain uses. The general consensus was that is pretty anti-business. It's pretty restrictive. So just, she did not agree with that. And that was fine.
We have, we have traditionally had a requirement that we will have a proffered conceptual plan in order to consider it.
A proffered conceptual plan for every Commerce Center rezoning?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
I'm going to have to defer to Brett on this one because he's had more experience than I do.
Yeah, we, it, I believe it's been a strict requirement, but it's been something that's typically been asked with, with most, if not every case.
It was asked, I guess I could say.
I don't want, excuse me, but I don't understand that. Is it a strict requirement? Is it a factual, this is, you have to have this, or is it a suggested or?
No, you could rezone without one ordinance doesn't require it, but we've, with most cases, I would have to go back and look. I couldn't say all, but I would say certainly the majority have, have provided one either, either up front or at the request of staff. Or sometimes I think we may have gotten to the board level and then they've conceded to proffer it at the board's request.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Little more meat on those bones. Mr. Shardine, we had to, had a vigorous discussion with Mr. Pompey about this. That was not something that he really wanted to do, but in fact was required to do in order to get board approval. And so it became the standard. And it's the standard for practical reasons so that we actually know what's going to happen with the property. Without a conceptual plan, it can be sold and you put anything in there you want. With the conceptual plan, they have to use where the buildings are and the layout. This has a nice park in the back. But the park is only a requirement if it's part of the conceptual plan. As Mr. Blackney says, they can do anything they want. So it's a practical matter for the board to know what, what is it that we're voting on? And so we had that discussion with the gets rezoning. And I remember Mr. Williams looking at the attorney and saying, And I remember Mr. Williams looking at the attorney and saying, do you want to have this approved? And he said, yes, they said, then you need to proper the plan. And he did. And, and we went on and we knew where the roads were going to be built and everything else. So you already see, well, you're looking at a sketch, which is, which is, it's not scale. You don't know really where things are. Scale, what you're looking at is not what you're going to get. Okay, the parking's gonna move. So I'm sorry, I, I would, my druthers is to defer this until we can get a proffered conceptual plan and some, and a layout to scale that shows us what we're doing. I don't have any problems with, with, with the use. I don't have any problems with the location or any problems with transportation. I just would like to know what it is that I'm voting on. So my recommendation is that we defer this for thirty days to our next regular board meeting. So that we have a better idea of what we're voting on. That's a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Um, do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Brett. In the zoning district Commerce Center or any other zoning district. And we had this down Page Road with the Stroud rezoning. If it's planned development, I understand you can have any type of multiple uses that can be approved with the rezoning. In this case, where we've got, you know, a Commerce Center rezoning, don't we typically require the usage to be identified? And I'll go the explanation for doing it is because you always want to know the use if it pertains to, for example, trip generation. You know, what type of other things that come out of the use? As it fits into that particular area. I know Commerce Center is Commerce Center. But where things fit together, isn't that something we've always done, always required people to do when we've asked them? If you're going to submit a rezoning, what is going to be the use? Are we getting away from that?
Yeah, we have, I guess, two, two things related but different. We have typically always had them state their use. So we, I can't recall us doing a, might call it a speculative rezoning where somebody comes in and says, I just want to zone this parcel to CC. Don't know what I'm going to put on it. Not going to tell you, just, just, we haven't done that. People have always said what they want to use. I, I'm not sure how often we have actually then proffered that. Sometimes people have proffered out uses and they might say, I want to do, this isn't a proffer, but they're just saying, I want to do a gas station. And I'll agree to proffer out six, ten intense uses, but between the use they stated and what they proffered out, there's probably still some other uses there they could do. I, I don't think, Tom, I don't know if you recall, that many times we had a proffer that says this property shall be approved for only this single stated use and no other uses. So we've, we've probably looked at some of these and been comfortable that we've, particularly when we've had a conceptual plan. But those, those could potentially change and have different uses. So I don't think we've nailed too many of them down to only the one use. We have proffered out certain uses. We've had.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cox, hold on a second. Yes, Ms. Carmen.
That was similar to what I was going to tell you to work with the applicant over the next thirty days. Basically, I think what would give the board comfort is if you tightened up the conceptual plan and proffered out any of kind of the more quote unquote potentially egregious use, uses, sort of like we did with the Stroud case, I think would be what, what we're looking for.
Can I ask what you consider an egregious use in Commerce Center that I can go forward and filter out?
If we, we got rid of a lot of them.
Because it's, it's, the list is pretty parsed down and I see that there's, you know, plans to parse it down even more. So I just, some direction for me would be lovely.
If it, if it's an egregious use, it shouldn't be in there.
Exactly.
That's the way I look at it. An egregious use, why is it in there? Yeah, and, and to go off a little bit, and, and one thing, and I'm not trying to be difficult, because I, I do agree, I want to know what the property is. I, I want to know what you want to do with it. I, I'm not saying I, this is absolutely what you have to do, but a word that makes me nervous, having been a small business owner, when I'm getting into what I'll call legal situations, when you start telling me typically, I'm not into typically. That doesn't work for me. It either it is or it isn't. Typically means you're kind of making the rules as you're going a little bit. And, and, you know, if I'm in your shoes, I, I want to know where's the guidance of what you guys want me to do? Not being disrespectful when I say guys, but, uh, you know, what is it you, you, you want? Where do you want me to go? You know, we have a, we have an applicant that comes to Powhatan County. We preach ninety-two percent or ninety-six percent commercial or residential to four percent or eight percent residential, and we want to improve that. I, I'd like to improve that. I'd like to vote for some commercial business. I, I think that, you know, the conceptual plan and Mr. Cox is in, yeah, I, I, I'm with that. I, I'd like to see that. But the word typically makes me very nervous, no matter which side of the fence I'm on. If I'm on the, 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 the business side or I'm up here, you know, trying to vote for something that's going to be good for this county and, and good for the, the citizens of this county. I, I like Mr. Cox's suggestion, his motion to defer for thirty days. I, I, I can support that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
I don't remember us restricting uses. What I do remember us is the conceptual plan and the building and the way it's laid out automatic, almost always restricts what can be done unless someone wants to come in and just totally tear it down. And then they've got to go back through the process. So the conceptual plan gives you that kind of, it doesn't guarantee anything. We don't need any guarantees. Okay. But it gives you the limitations and understanding of what can be, what the uses, it can be there. And with Stroud, Woody didn't want to give us a, you know, a proffered conceptual plan, but he did.
And he did screen out some of the uses too in the Stroud case, which was different.
Right.
Not typical.
Okay. Any, any other comments or questions by the board? Um, we need to roll call on deferring this to next, we don't?
Don't need a roll.
Don't need a roll call. Do we need to at least have a head nod that we're all in agreement on that? Do we all agree for, for thirty days till next week, next month? Okay. Get with Mr. Sherdine and let's get something a little more defined and we'll go from there. Okay, great.
Brett, all right. Uh, next public hearing is on the FY twenty-four budget. So this is based on the adopted sixty-nine cent tax rate. It's a total budget of one hundred and fifty-four million, five hundred and sixty thousand and five hundred and forty-seven dollars. That is an increase of five point, sorry, five point seven percent from the FY twenty-three budget. So this evening, we're just having a, a public hearing on it. The board cannot act on it this evening. We're proposing May first adoption of the budget. So myself and Ms. Charlotte Schubert, our finance director, available if there are any questions.
Okay, let's open up the public hearing. Anyone from the public like to come down in the first three rows here and speak? Come right on up.
Are they gonna, are they gonna get to include the man road extension in the, in the, the new budget? Because I, I saw this thing where like, they're going to build like two baseball fields and extend man road. If they're, if they're going to extend man road, can they include extending the sidewalk along man road? I also wrote a thing that there was like a thing where it said they were going to put a million dollars towards a Garter, Garter Colony Road. And like those five hundred thousand dollars budgeted for man, for man road. If Powhatan County, Powhatan County could use the five hundred thousand dollars from man road to go after a bigger transportation grant to finish it, because it'd be twenty percent of whatever, five, the five hundred thousand could be used to go for a bigger highway grant. And also I'm curious about they're gonna, are they gonna, they're gonna have money to fix the trails in the Fighting Creek Park?
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Board members, comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Couple of things. I believe Mr. Sheridan's talk with the county attorney. Our advertisement is for sixty-nine cents and all the numbers that flow are from sixty-nine cents and it is a synopsis. However, and it tells you, you can go to the county website to get definitive information. We have no information for a budget with sixty-nine cents on our county website. So question, Mr. Blackney, it, does that present any problems for us?
No, when we advertised, I think we advertised still anticipating the previous budget. So since the sixty-nine is going to force the budget down, we're fine.
But the sixty-nine is what we advertise. It's just there's no backup on that. That's all. Okay.
But the existing, the budget that was advertised would function at sixty-nine cents. And so any reductions are, are not, it doesn't necessarily that we advertise the reductions because they will be reductions and not increases.
Thank you. The CIP, our capital improvement program, is part of our budget. And if you were to look at the twenty-twenty-three approved CIP and compare it to our projected twenty-twenty-four CIP, we have reduced the twenty-twenty-three by five hundred thousand dollars. We've reduced it five hundred thousand dollars. So it's sixty-two million, one hundred and sixteen thousand. That's the ten-year projected spin. That was built, the twenty-twenty-three, which is approved, was built on seventy-seven cents. Now we have sixty-nine cents. Now, I asked Ms. Schubert to run some numbers for me. And so the question was, how much money was coming in to this ten-year CIP? At seventy-seven cents? And how much money is going to come in at sixty-nine cents? Now, Mr. Byerly, I know you don't like my graphs. And that's okay. But in fact, these are projections and they give us some idea of where to go. At seventy-seven cents over the period, twenty-twenty-four to twenty-thirty-three, the surplus or a fund balance before CIP, the addition would be sixty-eight million dollars. I'm just gonna round it off. Okay? At sixty-nine cents, it's thirty-five million. So we've dropped thirty-three million dollars in revenue over ten years out of the CIP. But we've only taken five hundred thousand dollars out of the projects for CIP. We have a disconnect. Okay? The citizens wanted more money back. More real estate tax rate. We gave them more money back. They got, they got that. Okay? However, there is now, the trade-off is coming. We don't have the same amount of money to do the same amount of projects. And we have a significant shortfall in money to do projects. So I'm suggesting to you that we can't go forward with a budget until we have at least some adjustments to the CIP. And I think, Mrs. Carmack, I know you said, well, can we just do the twenty-twenty-four? And not worry about the rest of it. And the answer is, I don't think so. Not with these kinds of numbers. Okay, not with these kinds of shortfalls. Now, I don't know that we have to finalize the ten-year CIP, but we have to understand that we've taken thirty, some thirty-odd million out of it. And that's going to have ramifications and they're going to be projects that we're not going to be able to afford. Our projects that if we afford are not going to be on the same timeframe. And that's neither good nor bad. That's just the reality of responding to our citizens and giving them more of the money back rather than retaining it and using it for capital projects. So on the CIP side, we really don't have a budget. Okay, just doesn't work and because it's based on seventy-seven cents. So I think we need some work on that. And part of what, part of what has me concerned is twenty-twenty-five, the next budget has a fair amount of debt potential in it, and that's going to drive the amount of money for CIP. So it's something that, it's, it's not things that are going to be happening in, in twenty-thirty or twenty-thirty-two. It's things that are going to be happening in the next cycle for the next board. I mean, it's really going to come right at you. We have eight million dollars worth of parks and wrecks and six million dollars worth of school. And those are all, as it exists today, bonded projects. So we, we need to sit down and have to talk about that. We have some, we have more information than we've ever had before. We've never had this kind of information to give us the insights into what we're doing. Mr. Byerly was talking about the chart that we had at our last meeting. And he said, wait a minute, this says sixty-nine cents for ten years. When does that ever happen? And he's absolutely right. It's not going to stay the same. But this information is, tells us where we make the changes, whether they are effective or not as we go down the road. So Mr. Byerly is right about that. You know, it's not frozen in time. And so we need to look at our options and have a much clearer idea of where we're going. If we're going to have a ten-year CIP, we rejected the fire county administrator, Tubak, where he had gotten us to a one-year CIP. You can't function on a one-year CIP when you have capital cost. Things that you want to do that amount to sixty million bucks over ten years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cox. Good comments. Anyone else? It's quiet, crickets. I'll help it. I'm gonna get it so we can have a little more conversation here. I like your graphs. They're okay. I just like to see them a little bit ahead of time, kind of like in the past, you know? The information, if we get them ahead of time, we can look at it and review.
Distributed on Thursday before the meeting.
I'm talking about this meeting here. You're talking about the last one. Yeah, no, I'm, yeah, no, I got that. Yeah, I know they were. The, uh,
No, the reason that, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Byerly, is, okay, I didn't give you the graph. This is thirty million bucks. Okay? It's a quick and dirty, but it's a big number and it need, you, you don't have the information that you need yet.
Well, I, trust me, I, I've looked at it. I, I got a little bit of ideas to, to what, what's happening there in, in the money. And, you know, it's an interesting comment that you made. And I agree with you. The citizens ask for money back. They wanted it.
We gave it to them.
We gave it to them. You know, so when you give the money back, guess what happens? I mean, I don't think you gotta be a genius to figure it out. You're not going to get all these other things, but you got your money back. You don't give back eight cents, which comes up to it, I think, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars a penny. That's like four million, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars of revenue that you gave back. So you don't get all of the projects. And where we hadn't borrowed any money over the past thirty-six months, you might have to borrow some in the future. Maybe. I, I personally don't think so at all. Um, the the, 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 the budget meeting will be at, will be, is it May first?
Yes, sir.
The date of it. So, Sean, uh, May first, and that's when we'll be deciding what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. Okay. Let's move right on along.
The next item we have is public hearing on ordinance zero twenty-twenty-three dash twenty-five. And this is amendments to the Powhatan County Code of Ordinances, which we typically update and readopt as part of our budget work each year. So a few changes here. So a few changes here, primarily dealing with some cleanup and then some planning and zoning fee changes. Most of those were proposing to change because the cost of associated legal ads in the paper have gone up. So we're just trying to make it revenue neutral, essentially. Some other ones, we're making adjustments that we haven't touched in a few years, just to be kind of comparable to others in the area, comparable localities. That's it.
Okay, we'll open up the floor for public comment on the fees. Is there anyone on Zoom?
We do have Ms. Judy Oliver. She raised her hand shortly after we closed the last public hearing. So I'm not sure if it was for this or not, but we do have Ms. Judy Oliver.
Well, let's invite her to speak. Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
And we don't know if you want to speak on the previous public comment or public hearing, which was the the budget? Or if you want to speak on the fees?
Not the fees.
Okay.
On the budget.
On the budget. Can we do that, Mr. Latchney, being as close?
Yes.
Okay, go right ahead. State your name and address, Ms. Oliver.
Dr. Judy Kane Oliver, 4372 Three Bridge Road. And I am also the chairman of the Senior Action Committee. I wanted to speak in support of the PrAC proposal to fund the feasibility study of the community center. The earlier request made to the board for designated space for 55-plus programming has now warped into a community center to include space for 55-plus, allowing for expanded opportunities to serve all ages of persons in the community. I also, though, wanted to avoid a frustration that I have heard numerous times from some supervisors that no one in their district supports 55-plus programs and designated space. However, in other discussions such as earlier this evening, those same supervisors speak as representatives of the entire county. There is wide support throughout the community for this programming for seniors, and I encourage you to have honest conversations with citizens of Palatine. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have anyone else on Zoom?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, we'll close the public hearing. Board members, comments on the fees?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm on the AFD committee and they wanted me to ask if the board would consider moving the fee from $300 to $100. I myself have not done research, but supposedly that is more in line with what other localities charge to get in the AFD.
Where are you?
I'm on page 142.
Oh, okay.
142, a little a little 142.
What are we second?
Changing the fee from 300 to 100.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, if you guys want to entertain that, changing it from 300 to 100, that's supposedly in line with other localities.
I was going to ask, what was the purpose of the change?
That was why.
Okay. Any other changes, any other conversation? Okay, so we have a motion to reduce the AFD registration fee. Application, application fee, from 300 to $100. The motion's been seconded. We need to do a roll call on this.
But this is, this is a motion to approve the fee schedule as amended.
We can make it that. We can make the motion that way, I would think. That way, yeah, that would keep it simpler, wouldn't it? You want to restate the motion, Ms. Carmack? And then as Mr. Cox suggested, as amended.
Yes.
That AFD.
I propose we approve the attached fee schedule with the exception of moving the forestal establishment fee from 300 to 100.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Now you need a roll call.
Oh, now we went to the the actual, I got it. That might get it. Thank you very much. Roll call, Mr. Chardein.
Mr. Williams? Mr. McLone?
Aye.
Mr. Cox?
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye. Okay, screw it then. Second public comment period. We have anybody on Zoom? Not seeing anybody there.
I think Ms. Judy Oliver, but I'm not sure if she ever lowered her hand from speaking previously. Can you tell if she lowered it and raised it again?
Are you there, Ms. Oliver?
Sorry, she put her hand down.
Okay, I'm sorry. Anyone else want to speak public? Mr. Swindeman?
Center and could they consider putting it like at the east end of the village? Because there's like a piece of land, there's like a piece of flat land there where it's like a field. And the tidewater and Western Railroad bed comes out of the woods under the flat spot. And then it comes up to the highway. Would they consider putting it maybe there sort of incorporated into it would help preserve preserve the land around like a little mini park or something?
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Steve Barham, 3492 Richards Run District 3. So I've been saying for the last year, so county waste. We need to find it and get rid of it. It's still there. I don't think we've looked hard enough for it. I think $8,000 was more county waste. But that being said, it's done. Now, if y'all are taking requests to have four years re, you know, reimbursed, where do I send them to? Because I had quite a few the last year or so. And if I can find out where I can send it to to have them reimbursed, I'd like to know that, if Mr. Chardein can let me know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Not seeing anyone else. We'll close the public comment period. And that will bring us to county attorney comments.
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
County administrator comments.
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Board comments.